They should have started the opening up at the beginning and said, "If anybody wants a continuance, get out of here."
Oh, yeah, no question.
We have to give our reasons, actually, when we already told them we want a continuance.
I mean, I only have a small deal, but I'm not for you to... What's one percent, what do you mean?
Right. Sometimes you get these people to talk to you.
Couldn't you get a worse picture than that?
You tend to send someone with their pro call.
Right.
You're not saying anything.
I know.
Tucker's taking a recess.
This is like, I didn't plan it today.
Well, they're all different. You can't get away from it.
Who is it, Elliot?
Could be recording us here.
No, you're a better man than I. She's engaged to a friend, Mike.
Are you kidding?
Yeah, Mike, look back here. I try to say, "Oh, you don't remember me?"
Oh, yes.
I'm with Mike's friends around the nephew.
Mike is doing.
Good.
How's the wedding planning going?
Good. Yeah. We're almost done.
Excellent.
The next calendar item number?
The next application before the board is application A 1906. It's the application of Joseph Champa, 42 Joey Road, Revere, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to raise an existing dwelling located on... Raise an existing building located at 450 and 417 Lee Burbank Highway to construct four commercial garages and storage areas with private office space above the garages. The commercial garages and storage areas will be used for the storage of construction materials and vehicles with private office areas above the garages. The site is proposed to contain 16 parking spaces, including four interior garage spaces.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. My name is Pat Fisher.
Good evening.
I'm with Fisher Associates Architects at 35 Fisher Road in Weymouth, Massachusetts, and I represent the Champa family. Mrs. Champa and her son Joe are here this evening. The building that is located on this address is an abandoned diner facility, and there is no need to rebuild the diner in that location due to the limited parking. They would like to reuse the lot and put on it a pre-engineered steel building that will contain four, potentially four, spaces for contractors. And when we say contractors, these are different types of contractors. It could be plumbers, electricians. They could be vending machine contractors, fire alarm contractors, kitchen appliance repair contractors, windshield replacement contractors. But it's someone who needs space for one or two vans or vehicles inside, some amount of storage space for the materials that they use as part of their business, and also some small private office space that would come with the type of organization that a contractor has. Not a large office staff, probably just private office space.
I'll ask that.
Okay. And that is, that's primarily the use. These are not leased. It's possible one contractor could take two spaces instead of just one space or four spaces. But the idea is, is that these are not uses that the public is going to come to. They're not going to come there to have their appliance repaired. The appliance repairman goes to their house. The security consultant keeps his very expensive security wire there and then takes it to the job site in his van. It's not nail salons, it's not cafes, it's not large insurance offices or travel agencies. The public won't be coming there. The parking spaces will be for the employees of the four contractors, who will probably leave their car, get in the service van, go to their destination.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I have to ask if there's any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. However, the ward counselor did contact me and say that he was in favor. He has one item of concern that he is addressing with the client, and that's the back retaining wall, to make sure that's structurally sound and that nothing comes down from the street above. That was his only comment, and I guess he said that there's still an ongoing conversation that he's going to be having with someone.
Yeah.
And he left... He was here early, unfortunately. His wife is in the hospital, so he had to leave.
Yeah, there's some amount of, a bit of site work that needs to be done. There'll be a demolition phase, there'll be a site work phase. All of those things will be addressed.
The only other restriction that we would, as a board, put on is that there's no storage of materials of any kind in the yard, in the lot. It has to be internal. The only thing that would be placed on would be passenger vehicles in the parking lot.
Yes, absolutely. We agree with that.
Okay. So, hearing that there's no other proponents, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. Is there a motion to continue? Row call, please.
Question now comes on continuing to April 24th. Mr. Bacili is absent, Mr. D'Angelo is absent, Mr. Lopes, yes. Mr. Mazzoni, yes. Mr. Pelton, yes. Mr. Tucker, yes. This is continued to April 24th.
Now, here when I made the presentation, the reason why we asked for continuance, because there's two members.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next calendar item number?
The next application before the board is application A 1907. This is the application of Stephen Gambelli, 22 Clark Road, Linfield, requesting a parking and height in rear yard variance to enable the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling on Lot 15 at 924 Winthrop Avenue, Revere.
Okay. From what I see is the... Let me pull this over. Is there a revised plan that was presented for now showing two parking spaces on the property?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is there anything else that you need to elaborate on?
Not really. It's pretty self-explanatory. There was a previous structure on the property that burned a few years back, so...
Could you close the door, please? Could you close the door, please? Thank you. Okay, seeing that this is a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. My question was, before we got here, was that there was no parking listed and that that was a concern, and I see that that whole area is tight and you have the fire station.
Yeah.
So I am very pleased to see that you're at least putting some type of parking on that property.
Right.
And being that it's a very tight property, you're going to have to do some excavation, some, I believe, making some type of a small retaining wall in the back for the stairs?
Yes, there will be a retaining wall for the driveway system, including stairs going to the yard.
Now, and this is... How far from the property line next to you? Because that's hard on the plan that we got. How far are you from...
The left side?
Yes. Well, the right side, the house next to you, which is 930?
Right. That, obviously, the back portion of that house is somewhat close. It's probably two...
I'm saying the two parking spaces.
Oh, the parking is...
Is there a fence there now?
No.
Really? I don't believe there is, because you've got the height.
Right.
So you'll have to put something, or you really won't have to?
I will, yeah. I'm going to put a little fence for, more for aesthetic reasons.
Aesthetic, okay.
You know? And it's about four and a half feet from the inside.
It's a shame you have to touch that wall, but you really need the parking.
Yeah, I know. It's a historical wall, but I'm leaving the left side of it.
So you will be leaving the center stairs?
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
Okay, that was my only questions. Are there any questions from board members?
Just the right side of the property, just to achieve the parking spots, the two parking spots. Yes, that's right.
Could you... Yeah, because I'm on the next street over, so I know that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a pre-existing structure there. It was very pronounced. My proposal's much less of an impact on the property, but it did burn a few years back, and it was destroyed by fire.
It'll enhance that lot. Oh, definitely, definitely.
Yeah, we have a nice plan.
Okay. Seeing that we don't have a full body, you have the right to ask for a continuance?
I'd like to go to a vote. I think it's pretty...
You want to go to a vote now?
Yeah.
Is there... Okay.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacili is absent, Mr. D'Angelo is absent, Mr. Lopes, yes. Mr. Mazzoni, yes. Mr. Pelton, yes. Mr. Tucker, yes.
Yes.
The next application before the board is application A 1908, the application of Brian Cooley, 364 Ocean Avenue, Number 1109, Revere, requesting a minimum side yard, front yard, rear yard, open space, maximum principal building coverage, height and stories variance, and further requesting a variance of the open space in the front yard and a variance relative to the minimum qualifying lot area of 4,000 square feet to enable the appellant to construct a two-family, three-story dwelling at 261 Bellingham Avenue, Revere.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Corey Rhodes. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrosio Brown, LLP, 14 Proctor Avenue, Revere. This is 261 Bellingham, and I represent the applicant related to these variances. You may remember this project from May of 2017, where variances were approved on this property. Unfortunately, due to some various issues, one being the strike with gas workers, unfortunately, the deadline was missed to obtain a building permit, so we're back in front of you for this property. It's a significantly sloped lot that currently contains a dilapidated house. It's at the intersection of Brad Street and Bellingham, and we've revised the project somewhat, but really, the relief that we're requesting is nearly identical to the relief that was previously granted for this project, or what is currently residing on this site. For instance, and is shown in the filings, which I adopt by reference, my client is requesting a three-story building. There currently is a three-story building on this property, and three stories was previously approved by this board in 2017. My client is requesting a front yard setback of 5.2 feet, which was previously approved in 2017, and is what is actually currently, very close to what is currently existing on the site. And with each one of these elements, I would just like to show that what is already at the property, or what was already approved by this board, is very similar to what we're asking for today. The only difference is we haven't been able to put all parking onto the lot, and there is a slight change from what was provided in the packet. Working with the ward counselor, she asked us to see what we could do about the Brad This is strictly a change to the Brad Street driveway. It is not affecting the number of parking spaces we are providing for this property. It is simply changing that entrance on Brad Street that had two parking cars side by side to one tandem driveway. This was based on some concerns from neighbors about the property taking up some off-street, excuse me, some on-street parking spaces. So we've been working back and forth with the ward counselor to try to address that, and she said she was happy with the proposal and that we'd work to make a change there. My client has been renting in Revere for the last two years, and we really would like to get this project underway and moved in, and we're asking for your support after this long road.
Do you have the item number of the previous variance?
I do. I have a copy of it.
Seeing that this is a public hearing, I'm going to ask if there's any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing now, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed?
Hey, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, though. I'm just curious as to the parking. I live at 272 Endicott Ave, directly across from us, and parking, as you know, in Beauchamp is pretty high premium.
Okay. He has a plan. Do you have a copy of... Do you have additional copies of the plan?
No.
Which I agree with the original plan. This one here I would have to take into consideration, but I would prefer not having tandem parking. Perhaps move it down a little bit.
I could...
But again, we can... This decision's not going to be made this evening, so...
So, do you have four spaces?
It actually was in an email that I had with him, attached to the back of the application. We are requesting a special permit for non-conforming expansion, to the extent one is necessary.
Okay.
Well, my only concern was the quantity of parking, and he has four spaces.
Just so you understand, the plan that we received, it would have been a wider... There wouldn't have been tandem parking. It would have been a little bit of a wider, and so two cars are put in. I guess there's concern because that area is so congested that...
Well, right now...
If they were to take the 20 feet, that there's always a white pickup truck there, and then there's the black car behind it, and I guess I freaked out.
I know exactly who they are.
They... I was saying, no, that the white truck move, because I would prefer to have two vehicles pull in, not have tandem parking, because tandem parking necessarily don't work all the time. You've got to juggle cars. Joanne McKenna receives concerns that if they take the 20 feet, that now there's another vehicle in the neighborhood that can't park there.
Right. Right now in the neighborhood, people are parking up there and taking Uber to the subway station.
And that's... I mean, I've traveled it, because I was very concerned. I actually spent almost an hour there discussing stuff, but then I traveled by there all the time going to Winthrop. I'm not too concerned about an abutter, because it's not usually the abutter's car that's there.
Oh, yeah, I understand. No, but as long as, as long as you get off the track.
They propose to have four parking spaces, which is...
Because also I find most of the tenants in the winter don't bother shoveling their cars out.
Exactly. And I'm glad you're here. But they would be, no matter what, they're proposing four parking spaces. Two underground garage in the front and then on the side, two parking spaces.
I got a question, because I live close to that property, and I was by there today. Unless I looked at the wrong house, I didn't see any parking spaces in the back. There's a house in the back.
Right now, there's no... The land doesn't... That house will come down. It's raised up with wood tie, the wood...
The one behind them?
No, the corner house. This is the corner?
Yeah.
And it has the wood railroad ties? That'll all be taken out.
Yeah, correct. This property currently, as it stands, has zero parking.
Okay. Are there any other opponents? Anyone else that wishes to discuss this? I'm lost at seeing this, the tandem parking. I asked that we continue, just because...
That would be quite all right.
I mean, the way they had it before, and I have... I'd have to discuss this with you. So a motion to continue?
Question comes on continuing. Mr. Bacili is absent, Mr. D'Angelo is absent, Mr. Lopes, yes. Mr. Mazzoni, yes. Mr. Pelton, yes. Mr. Tucker, yes. This is continued to April 24th.
Because I want to question one thing. If you could give my phone number?
Okay.
Call me after eight tonight, probably. That would sort of cross it off my mind.
The next application before the board is application A 1909, the application of Virgilio Pavlu, 102 Kimball Ave, Revere, requesting a variance to enable the appellant to construct a nine-foot-by-four-inch-by-nine-foot-by-four-inch unenclosed exterior deck with rear stairs and a one-foot shed roof overhang adjacent to the stairs at 102 Kimball Ave, Revere.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Attorney Laurence Scatino with an address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. In with me is the owner of the property, Virgilio Pavlu. As mentioned, we are here seeking a variance to extend a deck. We were here last year, actually, and we requested relief for an addition to the back of the property. So now we're just asking to be able to build a deck that would be about eight by nine off of the rear of the property.
Okay. I have questions, but I'll ask the questions after we conduct the public hearing. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Are there any opponents? Anyone who is opposed? Okay. No proponents? I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? No, so I'll close that side of the hearing. I have a question that you were here in front of us before for the addition. That didn't happen?
It did.
Okay, because the property is very confused, and then you probably got a call that someone was there looking around, because you...
No.
Oh, I went down there, and there was someone who lives there, so of course I had introduced myself and walked to the back of the property. This is the property where there's a start of a footing. If I go to the left and walk down, there's some footing done there with a little drain. Am I at the right property?
I think so.
Okay, and then there's a brown deck that goes almost to the whole yard?
An old deck around the other side, not... That's not related to this addition. That was built seven years ago.
Okay, but what... Is that staying?
The existing...
Is that existing wooden deck that takes up probably 90% of the yard and then around the corner, is that staying?
There's no changes to the existing deck.
So what can you add to that?
So, as you can see from the site plan, there's just a very, very small addition to that deck, so that the addition that he did that allowed for him to put a kitchen in, his addition itself was about, was a small addition as well. So that's all we're adding, is the small deck with stairs off of the new addition.
Do you have a clearer picture, John, there?
The photograph?
Yeah, the photograph, yeah, because this was... They just... Okay, you did go by it, so you...
Yes, at the moment. I had a concern, just as a resident of Revere, concerned of Revere, that if I was your neighbor that yard, I'd become inspectionist.
It's... Have you been down to the property? Are you... Do you reside at the property?
Yes.
Okay. So this back... This picture does not depict the deck in what I seen down there. The deck that's in place seems like it's a lot bigger.
He... Those are pictures of the, just the side where we were proposing the addition, the addition to the deck. It's pretty difficult to get the complete rear of the property with... When we took the pictures, it was pretty much covered in snow. We were going to be asking for a continuance on the vote anyway, so we can try to get you clearer pictures prior to the next hearing, if that...
Yes, and there's no shed now, so where do you propose a shed on that property?
There's no...
The deck is open underneath there. There's no shed that I could see.
We're not proposing a shed.
But you're saying something about a shed roof? What's the shed roof?
To the staircase.
Okay, I'm sorry, because it just doesn't... So was there any cease and desist or anything put on by the building department because of the footings being there or anything? This seems like it started and then it stopped.
No, the addition is...
I'm confused, so I apologize, but I need to get more clarification.
So the addition is still under construction.
The addition is done. It needs the final inspection. There was an issue about October with the plumbing, but that has been resolved. So the plumbing inspector had some questions, and that's been resolved. Nothing through the back. The footing in the back was put there during, when they put the concrete out of the basement, and when the inspector came, the building inspector, he told me that was, I think, in August, I need this variance if I want to put that stair off the deck, because it comes too close to my neighbor. And I have talked to my neighbor about it, which I did. I have a letter from him.
Okay, but so this was brought to the attention of the building department?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, because that I heard, and then I'm saying, well, wait a minute.
The building department sent me here for this eight-by-nine deck after they told me, says, you've got to talk to your neighbor first and decide, Byron Castillo, and then if you get a variance, then you can finish the way you want. If not, you just have to leave the door here, and you can do the deck.
Okay. But currently here, in this picture, you have a blue ladder here. It seems that this deck was already extended, because it doesn't seem like you have this distance to the door. Or is it just the way I'm looking at the picture?
I think it's just the way you're looking at the picture. We haven't touched the deck itself.
This was built like that in 2000.
All right, I'm just going to show my counterpart here.
Did you ever... So just a little bit, so I went here, and that's where the footing is. I see what they did, they put it right very nicely. This here seems like a code, it's not very... It's... And then they put it... And then they put it... And then they put it... All right. Did I take it off?
We do have a letter from the neighbor that would be closest to the portion of the deck in support of the project as well.
Okay. I know that we're going to be continuance, but I would ask that perhaps you take some aerial photos from upstairs and the house going down, so we can get a look, and then before the next hearing, clean up the yard, so that if we're going to be going there to really get a good look at it, because right now, even if you take the trash out, it will... I know the snow and stuff was there, but...
This is a little... I'll try. It's a little... Part of my understanding with the neighbor around this was to clean up something and also to cut a little tree that was because...
Well, the tree's been cut, right?
The reason is, because the addition that we did, we had to cut some roots, and there was a concern that now those trees are not stable and that may fall on his house, so then we had to cut those. So now you can imagine, I also have those trees cut down there.
Yeah, I saw that, but if you look in your yard, it looks like...
We'd have to bring it downstairs.
You have to get that stuff out of there, especially before you were to do any construction, because then you'd be prohibited to get it out of there. That's my concern. I think he's raising the same concern, is that if you start to do anything, you're going to be landlocked in there, and your yard is full to the back.
Absolutely. I think some of the issue with him cleaning up that he was trying to describe was with the winter months. It was difficult to get the trees and everything out of there, so the only way to really...
We had 14 dumpsters going in and out.
Now, the addition was in the front?
No, in the rear, right off of the deck.
In the rear of the deck. And you matched that up nicely, then?
The addition is only about...
It was nine by... Yeah, it was like nine by... It was a nine-by-nine addition. It was small.
Oh, okay. All righty. Is there a motion to continue?
Question now comes on continuing this matter. Mr. Bacili is absent, Mr. D'Angelo is absent, Mr. Lopes, yes. Mr. Mazzoni, yes. Mr. Pelton, yes. Mr. Tucker, yes. This is continued to April 24th.
Thank you.
The next application before the board is A 1910. I... Please... The next application before the board is A 1910. I, please, what took place here was an error in the legal ads and the notifications, which will require that we re-advertise this and re-notice the abutters to be held on the evening of April 24th.
Okay, so this will be continued and advertised properly?
The next, the next application before the board is application A 1911, which is the application of Hector Garcia and Annabelle Mulo, 74 Hertz Street, Chelsea, requesting a special permit and variance to enable the appellants to modify a non-conforming single-family dwelling by converting the building to a two-family dwelling with parking in the front yard at 61 Kingman Ave. Revere.
Hi, my name is Val Mori Valley with Coleman Construction and representing Annabelle.
Okay. It's pretty simple. I did, I went up and viewed the property and I believe a few of the other members did. Where it's a public hearing, I have to ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor? Hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing. I did visit the property. In fact, spent 45 minutes trying to get up the street because they're doing the paving. Are you going to be doing any excavation in the front?
None at all.
Currently. So you're, they have to be two nine by 18 spaces. And I think that was going to be very tight if I look at the plan.
So we can configure it a number of different ways if that's the problem. But the problem that the building inspector brought up to us is that they don't want any vehicles parked in front of the property because it's against city ordinances.
You, you, yes, you can't park it in front of the house, so
What, what I see with that is literally on the whole street and for a couple of blocks, there's only vehicles parked in front of their houses.
That, that, it's not, it's not, they didn't get variances or anything to do it, so it's not legal. But how did you propose it on your plan here?
It's, it's on the, the drawings.
So you're only proposing one space on there?
No, there's already a parking that's already set up, but that's an additional space.
So he would need front yard parking variance if there
That might be the old ones.
Okay, this stand, so which, this one here was November of 2014 with the four spaces, right?
Okay, yeah.
And then this one here, the 38, 2019, has no spaces listed. So what did you present to, do you went up to site plan review?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at the new plot plan that we, I think he may have forgot to put the parking spaces on that one.
But did you go to site plan review with some plan?
Yes, I did.
And what plan did you present them with?
The one that you, you guys have with, right now.
With this one with the four parking spaces on it? Or this one here?
No, 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 that, we presented the one with the four parking spaces.
And they told you that they didn't want the front yard parking?
Yeah, they didn't want the front yard parking or the side where they have vehicles parked already.
Oh, that, okay. Well, this is going to be continued, but I'll have to get clarification from them because it, and you'll, you'll have to present a plan that should, that depicts four spaces, nine by 18.
Okay.
I believe that the plan that you presented back in November of 2014 date, do you have that one?
No.
Okay. That one depicts four spaces, two in the front and then two on the side tandem. If that's what you're going to be presenting with us with, then you have to clarify that with the, the site plan review.
Okay.
Or do they have to go back to site plan? They don't have to go back to site plan review.
So we just have to present that to you next time we come here. Okay.
Updated.
All right, thank you very much.
Updated it, so it's, that's all. Just have it updated.
The information is, I don't know.
Can you take, first show to the clerk?
This is for you, sir.
Oh, that's your site? Yeah, that's not, that's the drawing. We need the plot plan.
I have an updated stamp. Where are the dates?
The date's up on the top.
Yeah, update that.
Okay, so update that.
The abutty of
Left, facing the house to the left. Have you talked to them?
He said he's spoken to all his neighbors.
Okay. The one to the right, no problem. I did speak to them. The one to the left, someone was concerned. They didn't know about this. So that, when I went and asked questions.
He, he said after he gave the letter, he went to go speak to him as well.
Even my neighbors go to my house and show me the letter. He said
Okay. Show the plan to the neighbor on the left and have them submit to you a letter so that we know that they're in favor of it. There was too much question that they don't know what was going on. All righty. So this, a motion to continue?
We don't have any opponents.
Oh, there's no opponents. No proponents, no opponents.
Motion to continue to April
24th.
Mr. Bacioli is absent. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Loebz? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is continued April 24th.
So that's, so before April 16th, have the new plan sent to this, to the clerk's office.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then if you can, with the letter of in favor of your abutter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next app, the next application before the board is application A 1912, the application of BJM Realty Investment LLC, 193 Crescent Ave. Revere, requesting a lot area and qualified lot variance to enable the appellant to construct a two-family dwelling at 46 Loma Street, Revere.
Good evening, board members. My name's Corey Rhodes. I'm an attorney with the Ambrosio Brown LLP, 14 Proctor Ave. in Revere. This is a proposal for the Endaluma Street. There is a lot out there that was originally set out in the 1920s, but as it, the road was not extended all the way out to meet the lot. It does not fall under the qualified lot definition of the ordinance. As that road has now been built out to the lot, we are asking for a variance for the definition of qualified lot to allow the construction of this two-family. It is otherwise compliant with all parking needs under the ordinance and all dimensional requirements under the ordinance. So it is strictly related to the definition of qualified lot for lots that were set out before the construction of a way. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to go over it.
Seeing as it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor?
I've got several questions. So I'm a proponent of the majority. All my questions get answered satisfactorily.
Okay, so I'm going to put you as a proponent. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. My name's Jim Conroy. I live at 83 Goldie Street on Revere, which is the, a big, big back abutting behind the properties. I know the Mercurio Brothers, fantastic people, have no problem with what they've already constructed from the standpoint of they have, in fact, somebody just said it was address 46. This is 56 according to my, the letter I got, right? We're talking 56 Loomis?
I have 56 Loomis.
Okay, I thought I heard 46. I, I may be mistaken.
The, the physical address hasn't really been set out yet because it has not had a road there for the last 60 years.
No, exactly. And that is my question. What is the lot number?
The lot number, the lot numbers are 287, 288, 289, and 290 Loomis.
All right.
Okay, so just that we're going to still conduct the public hearing. So
Yes, sir.
Proponents, okay. Are there any other proponents? Hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing. Now you can ask any questions.
Thank you. No, my, my concern, my only concern is originally, background, a little quick history, is this was all conservation land. All of a sudden, things are starting to happen behind, you know, my, my specific area. If this, I, I want to know, nobody can tell me the lot number. I went to assessing office and they told me it was Lot 28. It's going to be a one duplex home, let me just call it. There are two now that have already been approved, which I, you know, agreed to, 46 and 54, according to the last hearing, a year or so ago. Now they're calling it a one, two-family, single property at 56. That's fine. My concern is there are two more lots, lots 28, 28 and 29.
On, from what I am looking at, and the
I'm sorry, 27.
Legal counsel can correct me if I'm wrong. This, what's in front of us is, on the tax map, 29, block 432E, Lot 28. It's 7,200 square feet. That's what they're proposing a two, the proposed duplex.
That's for tax purposes.
Right. Delination, right. But it's Lot 28 according to what I'm looking at. Is that
Lot 28, that's fine. That is not behind my house. I'm the one going further down to culvert area. Going down, there's only two left. My, my question also is, is, is that open to be built upon? Because in my understanding from 2002, that has all been considered conservation land and forbidden to be built upon.
Michael, just for clarification, I was there this morning. 46 is already constructed.
Correct.
Okay, so the, the lot right next to it, if I, there's only
It's 54.
It's gonna be 54.
Right. Then I was told that there, there's a little turnabout, you know, that they, they put in a, a, let's call it an extended driveway for turnabout for vehicles. That's 46, 54, this little driveway. And now if, if we're asking for 56, one two-family, you know, what's called, I don't know, condo, not a condo, a duplex or, yeah, thank you.
Okay, did you, is he able to look at the site plan which shows the Lot 28 proposed duplex? And then you have Lot 29, which is a lot under construction?
That's the Lot 28.
The next one is all about the city.
Yeah.
That, that is
And then after this one, the city of Revere owns that property?
The lot, two lots, physical lots on the, on the, on the, on the map.
Yes.
And those cannot, and that's what I'm trying to clarify, cannot ever
They're conservation.
Right. They can never be built upon. Do, do I understand that?
It's conservation land. I can never say never, but it's conservation land, so it can't be not.
And that was exactly my concern because originally all of these lots were never supposed to be built on to the best land.
We don't get involved in that, so I honestly couldn't answer that. But right now it's depicted as conservation land, so the assumption is it's, it cannot be built on.
And I cannot purchase that land just for my own self-protection.
I don't think so. The city would have to put it out to, for public bid.
As far as I understand, the, the remaining lots going further down Loomis Street are owned by the city and are in wetlands. And if
Correct.
Any sale like that, I think the city council would probably have to vote on it even to
The sidewalk's already cut.
The apartment blocks there that are owned by
Not that, not that we've seen.
I think this last one, the 56 that they're going to build and now with the last one built, purchased. They purchased the double originally and now they've purchased this number 56.
Corey, that's my understanding. Is that correct? This is the last lot on the street to be built?
Yes, they, they have no, no, I don't think they have any way to buy it because it is owned by the city. And as far as anything on the other side of Loomis Street, that is actually where the wetlands is located, so the Conservation Commission would prohibit any construction there.
Again, I don't even care about the other side.
If you go there and look, the sidewalk's already cut for the turnaround.
Correct.
They're not going out for it.
Correct. And they did a great job. I have no problem with that. I, and my other question is, they, they put that road in, somebody approved it, which was great. Are they ever going to put a, 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 a cut through street because it was talked for years about
Again, we wouldn't even know that.
No, I understand.
The turnaround is the fire department egress, right? That, that was done for this last lot.
Correct, correct.
Because Goldie is, is a nightmare for any vehicle. You'd be asked anybody to make a turnaround speed. Nightmare, ambulances, fires, everything. All right. So again, I have no problem other than I didn't know, I want to make sure it's just a single two-family, right? Am I correct?
Correct, correct. Just one this time.
So I have no problem.
Well, the proposed duplex, so it's
Yeah, so it's one, one building that's going to be two condos or, or one condo and then another condo.
Okay, right.
Kissing each other, no problem. They're great guys. I've talked to them many times. I approve it, if that makes any
Do it, do you want to continue or do you want to vote on this?
Yeah, if, if it's with
We can, we can ask for a vote?
If it has a problem, you have a vote.
You want to go for the vote, right?
Yes.
I just didn't want to
Question now comes on granting the relief requested, requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacioli is absent. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Loebz? Yes. Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted.
Thank you very much.
Our next, it's a motion to adjourn and our next meeting will be April 24th at 4:00.